Thank you for joining us. Columbia Editorial Board is pleased to welcome candidates for Vancouver City Council, Position Six. I'm Greg Jane, I'm the editorial page editor, and I'll let the other editorial board members introduce themselves.
Jody Campbell, semi-retired, but still on the editorial board.
Yes, we save her for the important things.
I'm Craig Brown, I'm the editor of the Columbia.
And then we're also joined by reporter Carlos Fuentes is training us remotely, so he won't be asking questions in this forum, but maybe want to speak with you later and maybe writing a story about this. And as mentioned previously, we are recording this, we will post it unedited on our website and our YouTube channel. And with that, I think we'll get the important thing, the candidates. Please take just one to two minutes, introduce yourselves and explain why you are running, and we'll start with Leah.
Well, thank you again for having me, I appreciate this. I was born here in Vancouver, I grew up on Eastside, I'm a graduate of Mountain View High School. My husband and I decided to raise our family here in Vancouver. We both have worked blue collar jobs, and when I was 25, we were able to buy our first home. Unfortunately, that reality has been slipping away for a lot of young people, from what I've been hearing at the doors. I've lived experience being a working class and having to struggle, losing my job in a downturn in 2008 in the building industry. I was able with my skills in customer service to able to get a job within six months even with the economy still at a downturn. Let's see, sorry about this. I've also had the experience of dealing with medical debt due to my husband's open-heart surgery, which I've learned has been a big issue around here in the county, or sorry, the city, apologize. Recently, I just read an article that there's a gentleman behind the city council that lost everything due to medical debt, so that is a concern around here in the city of Vancouver. And the reason I'm running is because I want to be the voice for my community. I'm a longtime activist and organizer, I've been involved in several organizations like WHO, the Food Bank, SoM Soup, and currently I am involved with a organization called COUV Collective. They deal with the homelessness down on the 13th and Franklin. They help with sweeps and they help them provide meals on the weekends and clothing, and they're also helping with people getting, recovering from drug addiction. So those are the things that I'm involved with, and that's why I'm running.
Great, thank you. And sir?
Yes, hi, thank you. Well, I am Sarah Fox, and I have been serving on city council since January 2020. I bring to council a unique set of skills and abilities. I have been foremost, a urban planner for the last almost over 20 years, I keep saying almost, but time keeps flying. I really started being an urban planner in the city of Camas, working through, you know, all the issues of growth and, you know, development pressures and environmental constraints, did a lot of environmental planning there, put together their first urban tree program right before I left, and also worked on their housing strategy. And then I was recruited to work for Washington Department of Commerce. I was attracted by the fact that they wanted me to lead this inaugural climate program for the state. I ended up leading six state agencies in the work, we put together guidance around how to best integrate climate change planning into city and county plans, and I'm looking forward to the next six years of working at the Department of Commerce on the climate work that we have ahead, because the state just basically gave me $120 million to work with and grants to communities, so I'm really excited about that work. On council, I also bring my small business experience. My parents, you know, still live in Vancouver, but they ran a very small fabrication business, so I know how to weld, I know what the importance of skilled trades. I went right from high school into the military so that I could pay for college, and when I returned, again, went to college, used that military DI bill to do that, and earned a master's degree in urban planning, that's what I've been putting to work ever since. I also have been a union member for all, actually all of this time, because I've been a government, working for government agencies. So really, on council, I'm, I think I'm now the only union member on council, and I bring the trades lens and that urban planning experience, and what that means moving forward and why I'd like to stay on council is really the comprehensive plan. I mean, this is a huge planning document that really brings together all of our work that we've been doing so far on transportation and housing and climate, environmental justice, I won't even go into that, because you said one or two minutes and I'm probably going to. But we bring all these things together into a plan that is supposed to at least track us for the next 10 years, and I'm very well-suited for that particular position. And I also know what my role is on council versus a role as a staff member or the role as a appointed commissioner, all of which I've had experience in as well.
Great, thank you. And we will get into some more policy specifics later. One of the big issues, obviously, is housing, homelessness. How would you assess the city's response to the homeless crisis, and what would you advocate for doing differently? Let's start with Leah.
I think the city has done some good things as far as building more apartments, but I think we should start investing more in single-family homes. As I spoke on my experience, we have people that can't purchase homes because they're not affordable, so we need to work within the community to improve that. I've also been working with Hector Adahosa with Collaborative Roots, so I'm a strong supporter of the tiny homes, they've been very effective. His first set of units is down on Fruit Valley Road, which is not far from my home, it's 21 units. We actually had the privilege of Governor Inslee coming down a couple months ago and walk through those. I actually met one of the veterans that lives there, and he actually saved his life. So investing in tiny homes, I think, is a good way to put our resources into. Also, I have a good working relationship with my state senator of Cleveland. I just recently found out she is on the Housing Committee in Olympia, and she would work with me to champion bills for housing and help with housing issues down here in the city. So I do have that good relationship with her, and I would definitely want to listen to the community and the community organizers that are part of these housing, like Council for the Homeless, Collaborative Roots, organizations like that, and work with her and figure out solutions to the housing issue. It is a huge issue, I think there's separate entities to it. There's three issues that I've come to a conclusion there. There are young people that can't afford homes and rent, there are elderly people that are being priced out of their homes, praying to Laura with Council for the Homeless, are elderly people, their social security is less than minimum wage, so they're living on $800 to $900, and if 30% of their housing, if their money is going to housing, that doesn't leave much with food or other, and their medical, their prescription drugs. So those are things I would do as far as housing.
What was the third one, I'm sorry?
Oh, the, I apologize, the third one would be on the people living on the street, I apologize, I didn't mention the third one. So those would be three, the elderly people, people who, young people who can't afford to move out on their own, that are still living at home, and people who are living here in the camps. I hate, I don't like these networked tents and on the streets.
And a follow-up on that, you mentioned older people who sometimes are priced out. Is part of that the rising property taxes, because property values are going up, and how would you address that?
I think that is part of it. We would definitely, as city, would need to address that, the property tax. I know that property-
Does the city have much control over property tax?
Well, the prop, well, I mean, Prop Three, we brought to the people and they voted to take some of their, we as homeowners took part of our taxes. But we definitely, I don't know how much we can do with the taxes, but we could definitely be working with our local representatives to figure out a solution for that.
And then you didn't mention the safe stay communities, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm a strong supporter of the stay safe homes. I actually spoke on behalf of the third one, that they're voting for that. They are not permanent housing, they are transitional homes. I am scheduled to walk, do a walkthrough with Jamie Spinelli on the 17th, her schedule's been, both of her schedules have been conflicting. I actually did finally get to walk through the first one when I was working with my, the organization that put the plant, the planter boxes in there to plant gardens for the people that are living in there, so I'm a strong supporter of stay safe homes.
Yeah. Sarah, how would you assess the city's response?
So your original question was our city's response on housing and homelessness, so I'll start with housing first. We're very aware of the situation in Vancouver that we have, you know, the 40% of our population is definitely spending more than 50% of their income on their, on housing, well, 35%. So I guess, let's talk about what affordability means first, but as a level setting, so a healthy household budget would be not spending more than 30% of their income on housing expenses and rent. And in our city, we have over 40% of those households that are spending more than that. And then we have another about 15, 20% that are even more extremely burdened, that means they're spending over 50% of their budget on housing expenses. So we're very aware in the city and in this region of the constraints that we have, the lack of housing that we have. In Vancouver, we're looking at needing 4,000 more housing units. 70% of our land base is single-family housing, and land is not an infinite quantity, we have finite land resources, and so having these conversations around, you know, kind of going back to talking about what's happening, the comprehensive plan and our housing strategy, really having those tough decisions about where to rezone, how to upzone land, how to encourage all of these, you know, existing homes to embrace, you know, having a duplex or a triplex next door, because that's what we really need in our community to provide a variety of housing types. We can't just solve our housing affordability issue with apartments, we need, we need these other housing types, and we also need some of those new multifamily units to be owner, you know, the ability to own those units in a condo situation. And talking about the conversations I've been having with our state representatives are around the things that Vancouver doesn't have a lot of control around, like the condominium rules, and we have lobbyists that work for us, you know, at different levels, at the state and the federal level, and really saying how important it is for us to make that an easier on-ramp for folks, is to actually have different levels of affordability to buy homes, and what that looks like, it's not just a single-family home, shouldn't have to be just a single-family home. And then the other things I've been working on, which I try not to use too much jargon, but it's my, pardon my profession, so, but multifamily tax exemption program, I noticed this when I was in Camas, because I was managing the program for Camas, even though it was a small program, but it's a small city, there's a limitation where that incentive only applies to over, you know, basically large developments that come in, and I've been advocating for this program to apply to two units or two units, because then we could talk about incentivizing those ADs or the duplex developments and more of that middle housing type. Had some really good conversations last session with some of our area leaders, so I'm hoping to see something bear fruit, I guess, in this next legislative session. Around the city's response, we're doing everything we can, and really actually proud of our city, we didn't, we were one of the few cities in the state that had the Affordable Housing Tax Program, Tax Levy the first time that passed, and then we passed it again. And this time, we actually, as a council, you know, I was on council as we were designing what this new levy should look like, and we had a lot of debates whether or not we should ask for more, you know, go above that 6 million that we'd asked originally, and what that, what level would be okay and comfortable for our taxpayers. And we had to make a quite a big case, I was actually on, I volunteered to be part of the campaign, and I wrote the post statement in our voters guide, because I felt so strongly in what we did develop, and why we asked for a little bit more in this levy, and why we asked for it not to be limited to the same six-year timeframe. But that levy really addresses all three things that are kind of the gaps between what a county and the state can provide for us. We have, you know, a county is supposed to be the lead in our homelessness service provider, and there's gaps in what we expect out of homelessness services and how we would like them to be addressed in our city. And that's why we created the Safe Stay Program, as part of that program, as we developed it and put rules around zoning rules. Again, I tend to really focus on those details, but the reason our safe stays are so successful are because of some of those really big, minor but big details, like having a 1,000-foot buffer around our safe stay communities. That allows us to protect the folks that live inside, so they feel safe, you know, that's in the name, but it also makes a difference in those neighborhoods, because we're putting safe stay communities in places where they have already been feeling the impacts of our unhoused population, where they've already seen camping and other activities happening. And so now those communities are seeing that positive impact, and they're seeing for themselves what these communities can do for that population, and also they're feeling it within their neighborhoods, because their neighbors are also getting the benefit of being safer. And we're building a coalition of folks that are around those communities that are volunteering in the safe stays. I mean, we're building this whole new network, so I'm really looking forward to our next three safe stays that are going to be opening in the next year and a half, because we're going to be able to build those same, I guess, supporters of the programs. It's not a, it's not a solution, but at least it's, as a community, I'm proud that we're doing something, we're doing something, we're not just saying it's someone else's problem to fix.
Thank you, and I want to follow up, Leah, with something that she said. Sarah mentioned that 70% of the land base is single-family housing, and you would like to increase single-family housing, do we have room to increase single?
That's something I'd like to do, research on the zoning and stuff, because right now we're, as you drive around, we're building, the builders are building 5,000 square foot homes that we could actually be putting smaller homes on that property. So definitely checking out the zoning and how we can restructure that. But again, tiny homes would be a great option as well. Pedro's going, moving forward on two bedrooms, so working with the collaboration of organizations like that and finding property to build family, single, sorry, tiny homes. And the other nice thing about those tiny homes is they are also powered by solar panels and electric heat pumps. So with that money that they're saving on their electric bill, those residents can also be using that money for prescription drugs or groceries, so that's another benefit of those tiny homes. And I'd like to see more homes with solar panels, I'd like to be working with the, with our local representatives and maybe giving and helping give incentives to get people getting solar panels on their homes. I know I currently can't afford that, and I would love to be able to do that.
Thank you. Great. So first just a question for Sarah, you have a very high-powered job in Olympia, how do you find the time to be an effective city council person?
Well, I think part of it is you need to love what you do, and I love both jobs. So weirdly, that teared me up for a second, because I was just so fortunate to get the job that I got in Olympia when I, when I was offered it two years ago, and it was a big move going from where I felt like I was such an expert in Camas and knew Camas so well, and then to move to a job where I was creating the program felt pretty scary. But it's just like anything else, like city council, I was pretty scared when I ran for office for two years in a row and I finally succeeded the second run, and then I was elected, and then I was like, oh, oh gosh, I don't know what I'm doing, what am I doing here? And so you always have this initial moment of, you know, what am I doing here, am I going to be able to handle this? I am a full-time mom, I'm a, you know, single mom, I'm a full-time, I have a full-time job, and now everyone in the city thinks that city council is a full-time job, and they want you to be at everything, like the mayor is. The mayor is amazing, she can, she can show up at everything, it seems. And so how I balance it is I just, I really had to start setting aside my schedule, and I had to be very clear about what I, what I can do. I set aside every, I have two days a week where my lunch, my lunch hours are my city council lunch hours, so if I, if anyone out in this, you know, in our population wants to meet with us, anyone of residents, business owners, they know that's a timeframe that I have open to them, and make that very clear, and I'm often, you know, going right from working my job to, you know, meeting at a coffee shop. So that's one of the ways that I make myself available, and every single Sunday. Every single Sunday is a full day of reading the packets, responding to staff if I have questions, and getting them keyed up on what, what is, what things that I may want to address more fully on Monday. And so staff is, knows now, because actually I had to express to staff that I don't expect them to respond to me on Sunday or the weekend, if I'm reading, I read the packets on the weekends. So for the first year, I was getting, you know, different staff responding to me, because I, you know, everyone was home with, we were in the COVID crisis and everyone was home, but I said, I'm, as your employer, I do not expect you to respond to me on the weekends, I fully expect you to respond to me on Monday. But that's how I make it happen, is I, you just have to be really organized, and you have to love it. Dig in and enjoy the minute details of both jobs.
So you're living here and telecommuting up there?
Yes, yes, it was a remote opportunity, otherwise I wouldn't have been able to take it, because I was offered the job when my son was entering his junior year in high school, there was no way I was going to move, he would have disowned me.
Would have been good. Well, I've got the, both of the candidates, so talk to me about your vision for the Heights redevelopment. So Sarah, do you want to start with about that?
Sure. Yeah, that, that one was really interesting, that one, the staff was really launching that when I, when I took office, they'd done some work beforehand, but really came into a bit of a firestorm with the Heights redevelopment plan. The neighbors at the time didn't feel like they were being heard, there was a few different coalitions that were forming, I actually had met with them as a candidate, they had, they wanted to find out if we, if we would, you know, as a new candidate, if I would, if I would actually listen to them. When I took office, I expressed strongly that, at the time, the city was focused on really just outreach to recognized neighborhood groups and organizations, and wasn't really recognizing that these other coalitions had formed around their shared concerns, and I was able to expand our network of communication to those, those new groups. And one of the reasons this is really important is, again, kind of leaning on my background in community development, is at the end of the day, when you're putting together these plans, the thing that you're striving for is you want to have a public hearing that has more supporters in the room than detractors. And when, when we're, when we were having our meetings, we had so many detractors in the room, and as soon as you start bringing everyone into the table, those detractors start going away, because now we're talking actual, you know, we're making compromises, we're talking about why there are, you know, basically limits to what we can and can't do. And moving forward, the understanding around the, I'd say, the non-negotiables from that neighborhood, some of the non-negotiables were parking flowing out to their neighborhoods, that was a non-negotiable. So I was able to help make those changes to the Heights District Plan, that was originally proposed to include a little bit more capacity onsite for parking to ensure that that non-negotiable was covered. We were also talking about different height limits that were right up against the neighborhoods. Again, those are things that I listened, brought it back to staff, and really advocated for those positions that were really not game changers, they wouldn't kill the project if we moved some of that density more into the center of the site. And then right now, we're working on really the, we've moved past the plan, and now we're working on implementation pieces, which include, you know, roadway configuration and fine-tuning where exactly we want to have those activity centers of, you know, commercial walkability programming in our parks areas, and so I'm really excited about this next phase. And it feels as if the city has, had learned something from those first, you know, missteps, and have really been bringing the community with them on this next step, so I'm really looking forward to, or continue to work on this project, and just kind of reminding our staff, when I feel like they're going a little astray, have you checked with these other groups? I know they're not our traditional neighborhood groups, but have you brought them in? And I keep hearing, you know, positives that they are, and they're even seeking more partnerships as, as these different aspects of the plan are developed.
Okay. So what are your visions for the Heights redevelopment plan?
Oh, well, definitely listening to the community, I know there were some issues with the community there and losing parking and losing walkability. I definitely think, I believe that we should be going and meeting with those groups and listening to their concerns and being accountable for those. So definitely working and planning with them. We definitely need to keep the neighborhoods thriving, and we need to continue having parking and having those conversations, and definitely having walkable and bikeable areas and parks. Parks are definitely an important part of neighborhoods. I know that we have plenty of them in our neighborhood, and they've been very beneficial to our children in our neighborhoods. So yeah, I would definitely be sitting down with the, with the community and listening to their concerns and taking it back as a city council member.
Thank you. Trudy?
Thank you.
Leah, one thing I want to touch on, in your campaign materials, you talked about funding social services. What more should the city do and where would that funding come from?
Well, I'd have to look at the budget and see where we could get all those resources-
How much is the city budget?
I don't have that answer on top of my head, I apologize, and I was meant to look at that, and there's been so much going on with the campaign. I've been actually focusing a lot on knocking on doors and talking to the community and listening to their input and what they have to say about what's going on in our city. So it's one of the things I've been really focusing on. The social services, we definitely need to have resources, like I said, I'm involved in COUV Collective, one of their, their nonprofit, they are involved in helping get people off drugs and give them a safe place to stay. They've actually, I've met several of the people that have used their facility, and they are thriving, they're actually recovering addicts. One of the leader, one of the board members on that COUV Collective is actually a recovering addict, and actually, and he's my son's age, which is amazing that somebody of that age is doing something like that. But definitely investing in drug, you know, drug addiction, housing, helping people get, food insecurity is also a big issue, we should be investing in healthy foods, like the community that I'm supporting that's bringing those garden boxes into the stay safe homes, we need to be investing in good, healthy food for our community, so that's another social service that I would want to invest in.
So when, when you knock on doors, do people think the city is spending the money wisely, or what do you hear from the public?
Well, housing is the number one issue at the doors, to be honest with you. But also, the people at the doors feel like they're being neglected, they feel like they're not being heard. Every neighborhood is different. I was just over off 112th, and the neighbors there are very upset that they lost their bus on 112th. There's a lot of elderly people and a lot of working people that use that bus to get to work every day. So, and also crime, safety in our community has actually been a big issue at the doors as well. I know that our, our city has done a good job at budgeting for the VPD, I know we're putting money into that to recruit more police officers, I recently met with Chief Maury, and that's something that he really wants to do. So safety and security is another big issue that's at the doors.
Sarah, what-
Grab some water, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt what I was talking about.
Is Sarah, what is the city budget?
Oh, it's 1.7 billion.
Billion?
Billion, oh, yeah, yes, 1.7 billion.
Is that two years?
That's our buy-in budget.
Yeah.
My day job, I'm like, I'm in the million range, and the day job, I was like, wait a minute, okay.
And how do you convince the voters, the populace, that that is money well spent? What would you do differently with the budget?
Well, those are the, those are the million-dollar questions, I mean, billion-dollar questions. We have, going back to what are the priorities of our community at large, and our budget reflects our priorities, and one of the biggest priorities we have is surround safety. And so most of our budget is paying for our safety services, police and fire, and then, you know, we have a large chunk for, another large chunk for our operations around, you know, keeping our roadways well-paved, and our utilities, as we say, you know, another big job of city councils, make sure you have clean water coming out of the tap, safe clean water, and the sewer rolls downhill, so all of those things are important chunks of our budget that we have to be very mindful of. I have noticed, one of the other things that I felt, I feel a little frustrated by in our budget, I guess, when we talk about services, is the importance around our parks, programs, folks like to think, I think when they think parks, they just think of our land, and we are going to a park and a playground, but it's really about the other programs that we have, and that's where we really are supporting the community. And we had such a big hit, I may not have mentioned, but the first few months of when I was on council, COVID crisis hit, and it was just such a huge, well, to the whole nation, it was a huge hit to our whole nation, but it also impacted the way that we are able to- Impacted the way that we are able to provide some of those essential services to our community. Uh, going, you know, speaking about our seniors and all the programs that we have at our community centers for seniors and that social aspect and. I, as a council member, I was, I, I had volunteered to be a part of the operations, uh, emergency operations center, thinking that the emergency operations center. Role at the time, this is before COVID, was going to be something that would have been a better match for my military experience and my FEMA experience. So I thought it was going to be when we had a big earthquake or maybe a massive fire, you know, in, near town or something. Instead, it was the COVID crisis and I didn't know anything about health services or, or any of those things. So it was a, a huge learning on the job experience. But what I did see uh, on, when I was on the. When the E O C was, was activated, was what would, what happened when we closed all our community centers? And when we closed down our parks too, we wrote top all our parks because we were worried about the spread of COVID, uh, what that could do to a community and. Uh, only ten percent of our budget could bring this back to budget, um, is on our, um, is for our parks and services. And if anything, I would like to see more of your budget going to parks and services because. Of, of all the, the needs we have on our community, I utilized as a single mom. Uh, park services every summer for childcare. They have an amazing, a summer program. That has uh, the ability for you to drop your kids off early and pick them up late. And that's perfect for a working mom. Not all cities in our region have that. So I feel very uh, thankful that our, our city does. Um, but you know, like I said, we have all ages of programming in our park service and that's really a nice um. Compliment to the services that are available when it comes to uh, what the county and the state can provide in our, in our area. Um, I forgot, I think I went off topic on your question.
I know, that's what, yeah. Um, you, um. Uh, so you personally, you would like to see more spending on parks and services?
I would love to.
What, what would you like to see less spending on?
Less spending. See, that's the problem. I don't want to see less spending on, uh, on the things that we're already funding. We have so many ideas right now at city council, the things that we want to pursue. My mind is, is racing on some of the initiatives.
So to do that, would you advocate for raising taxes?
You know, that's, I don't advocate for raising taxes, although that's the practical response to, we need more funding. I do advocate for different partnerships and really, one of the things folks might not know is that our council serves on a lot of different regional boards and commissions. We have a lot of power in bringing together these partnerships and bringing funding and. Uh, you know, yeah, I just came from um, the Children's Justice Center, uh, board meeting, um, and. That's a partnership. We have the county and, and the city are working together on how to provide more services and how I can advocate for the county to provide. More funding to that, that essential service. Uh, we are on the. Also on the CRDC board, I was there this morning too, and looking at all of those different agencies and, and groups to say, okay, we need. We need more help with our climate action plan business community. Let's see what we can do there. I think that as we have more conversations around this. Uh, we will find ways to, uh, to really light a spark under some of our initiatives without. Going right to the voters and say, oh, by the way, we need to raise taxes or we need to raise fees. I think we can be creative. Um, there's too many topics and I know I don't want to. Um, hold up all the air in the room, uh, talking, but it's just. Uh, I'd say my answer is no, I don't go right to, let's raise taxes. Uh, I do want to be creative. I am also. One of the things of, uh, as a state employee and working for the Department of Commerce that has been blowing my mind is all of the state grants and money that is out there and available. Uh, today, uh, one of the business owners was talking about expanding broadband in our community to really attract employers. I was just in a conversation last week with the broadband director of commerce. They were, they brought me in because I'm a city council member and they wanted my take on where they saw. Uh, gaps in broadband service in Park County. And they're looking to invest in our community and I. An amazing, you know, moment there where you go, okay, um, these are, these are, that's, this is free money. Let, uh, let's talk, you know? We want your grant money, right? So I think those things just, you know, again, really putting out. Uh, feelers, having people in the room, on these committees, these commissions, um, these relationships happen and, and. And we can shift and we can be flexible to win that monies here. We can use it because we are already thinking, um. We have the big ideas and we're actually, uh, with our visiting process, with our comprehensive plan process, those big ideas are really, um. I think, I think the news is out, uh, again, because we're actually have a real high success rate of, of actually winning those grants and.
And I'm sorry, I'm getting stuck there. I just want to follow up on Leah, what would you cut from the city budget?
Um. Honestly, I don't think if there's any cuts that need to be made right now, we definitely need to be investing in the services that the city is already investing in. Uh, we've seen that with, with affordable housing, um, but we need to define what affordable housing really is as well. Uh, but so I, there isn't any services that I would cut currently. Um, we definitely needed to. Make the decision to invest in our um, police force because we've, we've had a long time lapse of lack of police officers. So as we see the rise in crime in all areas of Vancouver, we definitely need to be investing in that. So I don't see. Anywhere right now that we need to do any cutting, but I would definitely want to look at, look at the budget and talk with the staff and see where there could be some things that we could, um. Downsized on and cut some costs on. There's always room to evaluate the budget.
And, and moving on, what, um, what are your thoughts about the city's climate action plan?
Okay, so I, I'm really excited about the climate action plan. Um, I just feel like there, from what I've learned, there are. Obstacles and barriers in the way that are preventing us from doing it now. Um, the building code needs to be redone. The municipal code needs to be redone. I think next year is, is too late, but that's where we are. I won't be elected to city council. Soon enough to make it happen now, but we definitely need to be working with our city manager. And the city council needs to be working together to move that faster. Cause as we've seen all the wildfires. As somebody who's lived here all my life, in the last five, 10 years, we've seen an increase in wildfires. We've seen it, an uprising in temperatures here. I was just talking to this, this reporter over here. This is the first, last year, we didn't even have a fall. This year, we have a fall, which is. Surprisingly, it's very nice. Um, last year, we went from hot to, to cold, but definitely we need to be investing in. Solar panels, wind turbines. We need to, I would like to see us encouraging, um, companies that build and make those, um. Manufacture those products, come here and entice them to come into our city. But in order to bring them here, we need to do something about the housing because if people don't. Companies don't see that there's available housing, they're not going to bring their jobs here. But we definitely need to be doing manufacturing, um, of those products.
Uh, Sarah, what's your assessment of the climate action plan?
Well, we are leading edge with the nation, really. I think there's only about four cities in the nation that have chosen. As aggressive climate goals as we have.
Is that a good thing or is that extreme?
It, going back to what I was saying earlier, I don't think it's extreme and it is a good thing to put out into the world that you have high goals. Um, one of the, one of the pieces that maybe are nuanced that I should share when it comes to putting together visioning and, and putting together comprehensive plans is. If you don't put it down on, 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 into these plans and adopt them as part of a, as a goal. Then you're not eligible for the grants that, that happen. And, and it's, it's a key piece of why we adopted our climate action framework last fall. Was to make ourselves eligible for grant funding that was available then and we didn't want to lose it. Just because you have a goal doesn't mean that, um, moving forward, you have, um. You failed because you haven't reached that goal in the next five, 10 years. There's obviously, you have, will have some explanation around why you didn't reach that goal. And you might want to adjust the goals in the future, but there is nothing, there is nothing wrong with setting high goals in our community around the cl- uh, climate action framework. I also know that a lot of our discussions on council when we're putting together the framework was, uh, the. The delicate nature of being too aggressive on, on transitioning our, our energy because. Of where technology is right now and understanding there's a, just a very fine balance between. Um, adopting kind of this new technology that's out there and the cost of doing that. Being very sensitive again to of our, our community and, and knowing. Again, how many people are already overburdened by household costs and adding high energy costs to that would not be. In our best interest as a community when we have some of the lowest energy costs in the nation. Um, so there's, there's a, uh. Putting a goal out there is one thing, um, and it is a framework, uh, kind of going back to, it's not a plan yet, uh, that's what we're working on and. So as we set these goals, we now, um, have to get, uh, really, uh, we, and we are, it's not that we're, we're not doing anything. That's another. Uh, misconception out there. We're actually working on some of these goals right now. So this now is happening. Uh, around, um, uh, several of the goals in our framework, because what you have to do from that goal to actually building the thing. Is you have to then put together that strategy and the steps to get there. And one of the strategies that we're working on right now is. Uh, investigating how we can transition our public buildings, uh, away from fossil fuel, fuel use and, um. And transitioning them to, uh, be solar ready and, and utilize electric, uh, power. So that is, actually, we've already hired the contractor and we're working on that right now. Uh, we also, uh, just, just received a hundred thousand dollar grant, a more solar, uh, resilience, uh, grant. From the state of Washington, another really exciting thing. So these are things that are happening right now. Uh, but to your question. It's, uh, the climate action framework, I'm fully supportive of the framework. Uh, there was a lot of compromise and, um, discussions on council that were very fruitful. And you can't attack everything at once. And so we're moving forward with the things that we can in a practical and measured way.
Right, thank you very much. Brian? Uh, there was, uh, been a, a few years ago, but there was a number of, uh, officer involved police shootings in Vancouver. The city hired a, uh, the. Uh, executive forum, I believe, uh, to make some recommendations and, uh, uh, many of those were implemented by the city of Vancouver. Where's our police force now, uh, in terms of, uh, equity and, uh, diversity? Are we doing better? Do we need to do better? Uh, so, um, what are your thoughts, Sarah?
Uh, yeah, that's definitely, uh, one of the, the top of mind issues out there. Uh, again, when I joined council, uh, one of the, uh, one of the first things they, they did was this, uh, report. They commissioned this report. We had, I think it was. You'll have to correct me if it wasn't fifty seven, um, it was fifty seven items that, uh, they recom- recommended us. Um, amending in their rules and procedures and some training aspects. I was part of this task force that we convened. I actually helped. Uh, develop, we should be on our task force as well to ensure that it was well balanced between staff and, and community members and. Uh, one of the, one of the highlights from this, uh, this work was the accountability aspect and being very transparent. And we put together the rules around, uh, and the procedures around using, uh, the. Police cameras, uh, the body cameras, dash cameras and, um, well, it's two camera systems. Anyways. The camera system for our, our police officers and really. Uh, I advocated for us actually adding that as a line item to the budget that year. It wasn't on there. Uh, and so I'm really proud to say that that's one of the fruits of that commission was making, pushing that through and making sure that actually happened. And is in, um, in place now in our community. When it comes to the equity side, we actually, I, I was part of the hiring. Uh, I volunteered again. There's a lot of things you have to volunteer for on this side from council, but I volunteered and wanted to be at the table as we were selecting our new police chief. Uh, we had, we had a, a great group of candidates and, uh, so. Uh, as a city, we're lucky that we can attract such great talent. Um, but Police Chief Mori just really stood out above all of them and, and what sort of. Focus, he is really focused on, on bringing more equity into the police department. His top, um, assistant police chiefs are, are all women from different parts of our country. Um, and they're bringing their lens to our police force. They, we've also, uh, in, invested in, um. A, a company that is basically going out and, um, and has a whole campaign about recruiting more women and people of color to our police force. And so. Uh, really, uh, it's one of the strategies of, of just transitioning our police force for the ultimate goal of. Our police officers on the street should better reflect our community. It, you should see yourself on our police officers and. Uh, having the police training facility in Southwest Washington is going to be huge. I'm so excited about it. Um, because, uh, one of the things we just signed last week, I think it was, um, with our intergovernmental agreement was. That us hosting the Southwest Washington Training Center here allows us to have six slots every single, um. A class that comes in, um, reserved for our, um, for our new recruits. Um, we've had a real, um. Waitlist at all the other training centers, which has really impacted us being able to fill our, um, police vacancies. So, um. I think I answered your question.
Thank you very much. Uh, Leah, what are your thoughts on, uh, diversity and equity in the police department and whether or not?
Well, I was happy to see that, um, Chief Mori was, um, the selected candidate to become our chief police. Um, as I spoken, said earlier, I did get a chance to sit down and meet with him. I've actually. Met with him in a community setting and in a one-on-one's, um, setting. Um, and it's my understanding that he is actually, um, hired, uh, two. Uh, women who are training people on ec- on police officers on equity and how to handle those situations. Um, I know that he's also working, his goal is to hire more female police officers so we can send those out, um, and handle the female, um. Residents and, uh, people involved in domestic violence and issues like that. Um, I was a strong supporter of body cams. Um, that was a really challenging thing for our community to, to get to happen. It didn't, unfortunately, didn't happen until the new chief of police came on the staff. Um, cause unfortunately, the former one, um, did not fully support that. And it is something that our community strongly wanted. Cause it's not only helps with accountability for the residents, but it's also accountability for the police officers. It protects them as well. So when they're out in a call and something happens, an incident happens, the cameras clearly have everything there. So they can go through the tape and they, they can know what is actually happening in the situation. So. It not only protects our residents, but it also protects our police officers. So strong supporter of, uh, body cams. Um, I would like to see, um, our police officers actually meet, go more out at the community and interact with them. Um, I was able to, um, with one of my friends with the C community, we actually set up a meeting with, um, the business owners there who have seen a spike in, in, um. Vandalism of their small businesses. We actually sat down at the table and, um, brought, um, Chief Mori was kind enough to bring one of the sheriffs from the county. And a police officer from the east and from the west side. So it was nice to sit down with the community and have those discussions. And feel like their voices were being heard. So I'd like to see more of that, not just on the west side, but on the east side to go out in the community. So our community knows that our police officers are, are doing the job that we hired them for. And I, I do give kudos to the city of Vancouver. For, um, pushing a budget. Cause I know Chief Mori said without that budget, they were really struggling to hire police officers. They were actually, when, every time they would recruit somebody, they would lose them. Though he would take somebody from somebody else and. But then one of his police officers would get recruited over to Portland or up to Seattle area. So now that we have, um, a decent, but a really vibrant budget for the city. Uh, with the police officers, I see that we're going to be moving in the right direction.
Hey, one more question for Leah. So what do you see yourself bringing to the council that you don't see Sarah bringing to the council?
I see bringing the people's voices. Um, one of the things that I've been really good at and really strong at is going out into the community. And talking to the people at the doors. I'm very comfortable and I've, I've actually, what's really honestly helped me is working on campaigns. Um, working for other candidates. I've, I've learned to go and actually listen to what those people have to say. And to go to all the parts of city. Um, right now, we have community forums, but they're not going out to the east side. From what I'm hearing from the east side residents, they're being ignored. And we need to be bringing those media, those community forums out into those communities. We need to be going, bringing them to where they're, they live and where they work. Uh, we have, we have an opportunity to rent a room in peace health. Where we have workers like technicians and janitors and nurses that are, they're working all day and they don't have time to go down to the city hall. And, and give their voice and what's affecting their lives. So I would definitely want to do that. And that's something I bring to the table is. I'm really good listener and I'm really good at organizing and giving people, bringing people together.
Great, thank you. And with that, um, why don't you give us your final pitch for why voters should support you and. Feel free to mention any notable endorsements you would like. We'll start with Leah.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for having me and, um, I hope that I, um, I get, um, I'm. I love, I hope I have the pleasure of getting the support. I, I hope I have the pleasure of getting the support of the voters. Um, one of the reasons, the main reason I'm running is because of our community and I don't feel like we're being heard. Um, we've unfortunately, we've, um, the city ha- council has chosen to move from the monthly forums to, um, to four times a year. So I would definitely, as a city council member, I would definitely wanna be um, bringing our communities together, listening to them going throughout, um, the city. Um, I'm sorry, what was the rest of the question? I apologize. Would you like to bring to the table? Uh, so I've actually, I've worked, um, I've actually, um, had the privilege of being elected by my elected P C Os to serve in the forty-ninth as our state committee member. I also recently was sit, serving as our, um, county state, um, committee, um, uh, committee member. Unfortunately, because when I decided to run for city council, I had to step down due to the bylaws. So those are other things that I bring to the community. Um, my strong endorsements that I have is I've had the privilege of being endorsed by Dawn Orange. I've known him for a very long time. He's a dear friend of mine. Uh, when he, when I heard about the oil terminal and he was willing to step up, I knocked on doors all the time. We went everywhere to make sure that we did not have that oil terminal in this community. So he is one of my strong supporters. Um, also, one of my, um, other endorsements is Sharon Wiley. She actually is one of my neighbors. We've known each other a long time. And back to taxes, she would definitely be somebody that I wanna talk to about, um, our state taxes. Um, I'm also been, um, endorsed by a couple educators, um, uh, Adam Aguilera, who's actually um, been appointed a couple times to, um, the education board through, in Governor Inslee. Uh, so he's been, endorsed me. Um, I have the endorsement now of the Washington Conservationist, cause environment is very important to me. Um, and I've been endorsed by One America. I've actually just recently been endorsed by a national, um, recognized, um, committee, which is called Our Revolution, um, which I was also a field organizer for them and got people out to vote. So those are things that I, my endorsements and things that I bring to the table.
Great, thank you. And, uh, Sarah, why should voters support you?
Well, voters should support me because of the work that I have been doing on council to date in this first term. I've really delivered on the things that I said that I would. I focus on, on important issues of public safety and housing, affordable housing and and really tackling our issues around, uh, homelessness as well. We went from, uh, basically, I mean, it was a well-intentioned navigation center idea, but it was, it was failed and see this really successful safety program. I bring over twenty years of experience in urban planning, which I've been talking a lot about today, but I also bring an experience of being, um, uh, involved in, in our local labor unions, um, and a lifelong volunteer. I volunteer not on, um, political issues, but I, I volunteer around community issues. I've been uh, I love, since I'm, was born and raised in the construction industry, I love anything that, um, volunteer opportunity that allows me to really dig in and, and utilize those skills. So I've been uh, an active volunteer with Evergreen Habitat for Humanity. It's all about, you know, building affordable homes for a community, uh, planting trees for, um, for our Friends of Trees program. You know, working in our water sheds around environmental issues. So those are the things that I'm really passionate about and I love, um, bringing volunteers into that space as well. And then, uh, really, you know, understanding that we have multiple lenses, uh, on council. So it's really important that all of us bring those, uh, skills and talents. I wouldn't say there's anyone on council right now that has the same expertise. And so that really, uh, allows us to really deep dive and, and reflect again, uh, the wider views of our community. And so that, that's really important to me and I feel like I fill that niche of, of bringing my life experiences, uh, to the dice and I'm really looking forward to the work ahead of us. Uh, I'm effective at moving initiatives forward and, um, it is because I, I listen and I, I look around and see who's at the table and who needs to be at the table. I work with staff at all levels and I really seek out those mutually beneficial relationships that we need with other organizations. I'm endorsed by our firefighters because I fought for them when they, uh, they said they needed more staffing and funding for essential equipment and, and new facilities. I'm endorsed by our police union because I did deliver on their police camera program and I'm a very, a strong advocate for their, uh, training and the new training center. I'm endorsed by Labor's Local Three Three Five, Central Labor Council, I B W. Uh, because I'm the only union member on the dice and I also have been a, a labor leader myself, uh, for Camps Public Employees Union. I was part of their union for seventeen years and six of them, I was their president. I'm also one of the only, well, uh, went too far there. Not the only member on council that advocates for family based jobs. Uh, that was misspoken, but I very much am an advocate for family based jobs, apprenticeships and, and really, uh, skilled labor, increasing the skilled labor capacity in our community. I'm endorsed by the Sierra Club because they recognize that I have a career protecting the environment, a career there. And I'm also leading right now the state's climate policy work. And so I encourage anyone who has questions to reach out to me. As I've mentioned, I, I hold time available every week to meet with anyone that wants to meet with me and we do need. Uh, please visit my website if you have any other questions.
Great, thank you. Thanks to both of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you much.